Afternoon session of the Portland City Council. Kealan, good afternoon. Please call the roll.
Good afternoon. Rubio.
Here.
Ryan.
Here.
Gonzalez.
Here.
Laps.
Here.
Wheeler.
Here. Now we'll hear from legal counsel on the rules of order and decorum. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Welcome to the Portland City Council. To testify before council in person or virtually, you must sign up in advance on the council agenda at portland.gov/council/agenda. Information on engaging with city council can be found on the council clerk's webpage. The presiding officer preserves order and decorum during city council meetings. The presiding officer determines the length of testimony. Individuals generally have three minutes to testify unless otherwise stated. A timer will indicate when your time is done. Disruptive conduct such as shouting, refusing to conclude your testimony when your time is up, or interrupting others' testimony or council deliberations will not be allowed. If you cause a disruption, a warning will be given. Further disruption will result in ejection from the meeting. Anyone who fails to leave once ejected is subject to arrest for trespass. Additionally, council may take a short recess and reconvene virtually. Your testimony today should address the matter being considered. When testifying, state your name for the record. Your address is not necessary. Disclose if you are a lobbyist. If you are representing an organization, please identify it. For testifiers joining virtually, please unmute yourself once the council clerk calls your name. Thank you.
Thank you. Item 193 is a resolution.
Authorize a non-binding term sheet with Rip City Management LLC and Trailblazers Incorporated for Rose Quarter operating and lease agreements.
Colleagues, today we're considering a resolution to approve the general terms of a new agreement with Rip City Management and the Portland Trailblazers. This agreement will keep the team playing home games in the Moda Center until at least 2030. This is the first step in the process. I will also direct the Office of Management Finance to move forward with the due diligence necessary to complete a bridge agreement. Within the bridge agreement we're considering today, the city's goals would be to subsequently develop and agree to another mutually beneficial, long-term agreement that would support the success of the Portland Trailblazers in Portland for decades to come. The existing 30-year term of the original agreements that led to the construction of the Moda Center expires in 2025. Securing additional commitments and extending the successful public-private partnership with the Rose Quarter is of utmost importance, and I've been closely tracking this issue for well over a year. The economic, social, and cultural impact to the Portland Trailblazers and the Rose Quarter to the city of Portland, our metropolitan region, and indeed the entire state of Oregon cannot be overstated. The Rose Quarter campus generates an estimated $600 million in annual economic impact each and every year, and most of this activity is directly linked to the activities of the NBA franchise. Managed by Rip City Management and led by the activities of the Portland Trailblazers, the Rose Quarter supports close to 6,000 jobs and hosts hundreds of events every year, attracting approximately 1.7 million people to Portland Central City. These are extremely impactful numbers, critical to the economic and cultural vitality of our city. I'm pleased with the work of our chief administrative officer, Michael Jordan, and his team, and what they have done to get us to this point. And I'm very happy to see the results of their hard work presented today. So with this, I'll turn this over to Michael to present the resolution and then make the introductions of our esteemed guests.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and members of the council. For the record, my name is Mike Jordan. I'm the chief administrative officer of the city, and thank you for having us here today. The resolution before you approves a non-binding term sheet between the city, Rip City Management, and the Portland Trailblazers. The term sheet attached to the resolution as Exhibit A lays out the framework for a new set of agreements to be drafted in the coming months that will allow Rip City Management to continue operating the Rose Quarter, including the Moda Center and the Veterans Memorial Coliseum, through 2030, with an option to extend to 2035. The term sheet is the product of roughly a year of regular conversations and meetings between the city and representatives of the team and the ownership. The city and team agreed early on that both parties would like to see a long-term agreement that included provisions allowing for a major renovation of the Moda Center. However, a few months ago, it became clear that the long-term agreement both parties desired could include additional partners and additional funding sources beyond those in the city's immediate control, which were unlikely to be secured on the timeline of the current agreement. So this bridge agreement emerged as a mutually beneficial solution. It extends the team's commitment to Portland and to the Moda Center until at least 2030, provides for meaningful investment into the arena, and perhaps most importantly, allows time for the city and the team to seek additional partners in a major renovation project and a long-term deal. It's important to remember that today's resolution is only the first formal step in putting this agreement together. With the city council and Rip City Management's approval of the term sheet, staff essentially received the green light to start on a great deal of technical and legal work to pull the necessary documents together for consideration and approval by the council later this summer. With that, I want to turn the floor over to Carlisle to give a brief overview of the terms and the deal. And I want to take this opportunity also to thank Carl. He's the one who's done most of the heavy lifting so far. I'm window dressing at meetings, and he does most of the work. And so I just want to shout out to Carl. Thanks, Carl.
Thank you, Michael. Yes, good afternoon, mayors and commissioners. I'm Carlisle, Spectator Venues Program Manager with the Office of Management and Finance. So I would like to provide just a brief overview of the key deal points in the term sheet that's included as Exhibit A. We also have members of our legal team available here if there happen to be any technical questions of that nature. As you've heard, this bridge agreement would be finalized in summer 2024 and would extend the Trailblazers' commitment to play in Portland through October 11, 2030. The Trailblazers would have the option for an additional five-year extension through October 11 of 2035. Moda Center ownership would be transferred to the city, subject to the city conducting due diligence on the condition of the arena. It's worth noting that the eventuality of this ownership transfer of the arena at the end of the original term was contemplated in the original 1995 arena ground lease. I would also note that public ownership of similar facilities is common and an important step to allowing public investment into the building. As a reminder, the city already owns Providence Park Stadium and the Veterans Memorial Coliseum, and both are operated by private enterprises on the city's behalf. Rip City would continue to have full responsibility for operating Moda Center and the Veterans Memorial Coliseum, and funding and completing Moda Center capital repair, maintenance, and improvement projects, and maintaining the arena in a first-class manner. Rip City and the city would agree on a five-year plan for specific capital projects to be implemented at the arena. The annual city contribution to the arena capital projects would be capped at the amount of city revenues generated by Trailblazers' home games during the prior fiscal year. The city contribution would also be matched by Rip City Management. Thus, the city is obligated to contribute no more than 50% of the actual expenditures by Rip City on arena capital projects. This arrangement provides the city a high level of certainty of having sufficient funds to meet the obligation in any given year. In addition, the city would continue to receive revenues from non-Trailblazers events at the Rose Quarter. To demonstrate the team's ownership's commitment to reaching a long-term extension, if the Moda Center ceases to be the NBA home of the Trailblazers, the city would be repaid for its investment in capital projects during the bridge agreement term. The city and Rip City would continue to discuss potential redevelopment options for the Rose Quarter as part of a long-term agreement, and the potential to utilize tax increment financing as a tool to support such redevelopment. Rip City would prepare a signage plan intended to activate the Rose Quarter, subject to approval of the city. Simultaneously with transfer of Moda Center ownership, the city would acquire for fair market value the Cozy property, a parcel of land that sits under a portion of the Moda Center that is owned by Rip City. This acquisition was also contemplated in the original 1995 arena ground lease, and that document contains procedures for establishing the appropriate price of the property. You will note that these terms do involve some additional financial commitments from the city, most notably the purchase price of the Cozy property and the new annual contribution to capital projects at the Moda Center. As you know, the city meets all financial obligations related to Providence Park Stadium and the Rose Quarter arenas with resources from the Spectator Venues and Visitor Activities Fund. This fund receives resources from ticket user fees on all events at the stadium, Veterans Memorial Coliseum, and Moda Center, as well as parking fees from Eventbaitland's parking in the city-owned Rose Quarter garages. It also receives a small annual allocation from a visitor facility trust account, which is funded by a portion of vehicle rental fees and transient lodging taxes within the city of Portland. We're confident that even with these new obligations, there are sufficient resources in the Spectator Venues and Visitor Activities Fund to meet all existing obligations during the term of the bridge agreement, while still maintaining adequate reserves for use in case of unexpected circumstances. With that overview, I'll now turn it over to Dwayne Hankins, president of business operations with the Portland Trailblazers and Rip City Management for the team perspective.
Thank you, Carl. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, commissioners. Appreciate your time. As Carl said, my name is Dwayne Hankins. I serve as president of business operations for the Trailblazers and Rip City Management. Among other responsibilities in this role, I oversee the Trailblazers' facilities, including the Moda Center. The current Moda Center lease between Rip City Management and the city of Portland expires next year, and I'm here to support the short-term, or "bridge," agreement that will give the Blazers and the city, as well as other stakeholders, more time to pursue a comprehensive, long-term lease to keep the Blazers in Portland for years to come. The Trailblazers are a unifying force, bringing civic pride and identity to the region and state, and contributing to local charities and important causes that make the team indispensable to the community. In fact, professional sports was rated as the top amenity in Portland in a recent survey administered by Governor Kotek's Central City Task Force, a task force I'm honored to serve on. Moda Center and the Blazers are vital to Portland's recovery, attracting nearly 1.5 million visitors to sports and community events each year. Moda Center, including the visitors it attracts, and the Blazers, generate $600 million in annual regional economic activity and support countless jobs at the local and state levels. As Oregon's largest gathering place approaches 30 years of age, a significant investment in Moda Center is needed. It is the oldest NBA arena to not have undergone a significant renovation, and a market-rate public-private partnership is crucial to secure the team's future in Portland and create a foundation of championship-ready infrastructure. Public-private partnerships are standard in the industry and have been utilized repeatedly to successfully build and renovate dozens of arenas around the country and revitalize communities. Why is a bridge extension important? It provides all of us more time and the opportunity to develop this long-term public-private partnership. The investment would improve and extend the useful life of this unique community asset and maintain its competitive position in the NBA and as a venue for concerts, family shows, and other events in the Pacific Northwest. In addition, a successful renovation would be central to revitalizing the Rose Quarter and surrounding area into a vibrant, transformational destination that will create more jobs and tax revenue, accessible spaces, and would support efforts to restore the Black community unjustly uprooted decades ago. A renovated arena at the center of a reimagined neighborhood would foster economic development, civic pride, and a positive outcome for the community and Oregonians, not just on days when there are events at the Rose Quarter, because our goal is to create a thriving area 365 days a year. The city and the Blazers have jointly reached the conclusion that more time is needed to structure a comprehensive, long-term lease extension. And as such, we've agreed that the bridge extension is a critical first step and provides the opportunity to pursue this long-term agreement that would keep the Trailblazers in Portland for years to come. And finally, I also want to thank you guys on the city team for your collaboration over the past several months, and I look forward to our continued work ahead. With that, I urge you to adopt the resolution. Thank you.
Is that the end of the presentation?
I think so, yes.
All right, very good. Counsel questions, then. All right, I want to jump in, first of all, just with applause to all of you. I want to thank you, Carl, for really taking this up on behalf of the city. Dwayne Hankins has been an excellent partner and has done an exceptional job in his role as president of business operations to ensure that we continue to have open communication, solid collaboration, that we work through some frankly very challenging circumstances with the passing of Mr. Allen, the owner of the Portland Trailblazers, and other issues just related specifically to the city of Portland. And I feel you've done an outstanding job of navigating those challenges and have looked with us towards a positive path forward. And it didn't have to be that way, from your perspective, but you made it that way. I really want to acknowledge that. So, thank you all. If there are no further questions, I'll just ask at this point if we have any public testimony on this item?
We have one person sign up.
All right, good. This could be quick and to the point.
Joe Alfone.
Prefer to stand, if I may. I feel more comfortable.
That's fine if you prefer to stand, but please just state your name into the microphone for the record. If you could just pull it as close as possible so people on TV can read. Thank you, sir.
Yeah, hi. Hi, my name is Joe Alfone, A-L-F-O-N-E. I'm from New Orleans. I've lived here for two years now. I was an English teacher in China, Russia, and South Korea for a number of years. I've lived all over the country. I've been to many world cities and traveled extensively. But yes, I'm a Portland resident, and I have something I'd like to say regarding this issue.
Great.
Okay, great.
You're in the right place.
Do I have to speak into the microphone?
It's helpful just because there's people who can't access us in person, so they listen.
Well, that's better.
That's fine. It's picking up. It's working.
Great.
Good, thank you.
So anyway, yeah, I'm an hourly worker at the Moda Center. Although my concerns are probably beneath your pay grade, I'm still here to express sentiments that I have regarding my thoughts on the extension of the lease, the five-year lease of the Moda Center. I provided two documents here, one of them, which is a statement that I'm going to quickly read today. And I know I only got three minutes here, but if I may. That, wow, I'm already at two minutes. Okay, let me just read my document. Okay, great.
And you can also submit it for the record.
No, I have, yeah. "I stand here today in opposition to giving away the keys of the city to an untalented, money-grubbing nepotism baby running roughshod over the city of roses. I believe that the city is making the wrong decision in forcing new taxes upon the working-class residents and families of Portland to essentially foot the bill for renovations on the Moda Center and the Rose Quarter for the do-nothing, greedy whim of the nepotistic sibling of talented pioneer Microsoft co-founder Paul Allen. She wishes to siphon off as much money as possible from his giving pledge wealth commitment to philanthropic causes. This vote today is not a guarantee of keeping the Trailblazers in this city. No, this is nothing more than giving Rip City Management a golden parachute to vacate the city after the resumption of a mere five-year lease. The current city government are pawns, being manipulated by a nepotistic sibling that has proven her only wish and desire to increase her stake of billions of dollars she inherited from her pioneering brother's hard work and talent. This agreement is shortsighted. There is no long-term plan. It is not a 30-year agreement like that which was signed in 1995 to keep the Trailblazers here for a generation. No, this is a money addiction power play by Rip City Management executors that have no allegiance whatsoever to the city. As a concession stand worker, attendant at the Moda Center, I have seen just how cold, greedy, and how inefficient the Moda Center and the Veterans Memorial Coliseum are being run by corporatists that are disinterested in concerns for the community spirit sensibilities such as providing a timeline for the return of the Korean War and World War II memorials. My father was a Korean War veteran. Healthy food and nutrition options, and the overall safety and well-being of the people that work there. I have provided a recent 10-point email, 10-plus-point email that esteemed Vice President of Hospitality Strategy and Moda Center HR officials and I discussed yesterday during an hour-long, empathetic, varying personalities-inclusive, These are some of the real concerns of real working-class people, like myself, that are the backbone pillars of this city, that cook the food, sweep, mop the floors, provide security and hospitality, ushers that keep the facility afloat, i.e. hourly wage workers, that without us, there is no Moda Center or VMC. Not vice versa, as out-of-touch city government officials and their millionaire and billionaire paymasters like Jody Allen and her cohorts that swindle the general public with their money-grubbing lust for tainted greed money would have us all believe. No, thank you. I ask you to vote "no" on this proposed legislation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Ryan.
Thanks. Transition.
I will leave these documents here.
Leave it with Kealan, and she'll make sure we all get a copy.
Great.
So great.
Thank you for your time, and very nice to meet you, Mr. Mayor and city council.
Thank you.
Thanks. Okay, great presentation. Just have a couple of questions. And so this is the time to ask questions, right?
Yeah, maybe Michael and Carl, and then if the Rip City folks, Blazers folks, need to come back up. We won't make you at this point unless you need to.
I think you mentioned some of this, but I might have missed it. But I just want to hear what some of the points are that we have to cover between now and the next six months. Is that what I was told?
Yeah, it's quite a lot of work.
Okay.
The...
Just the highlights.
The highlights would be we... The existing legal documents need to be updated and reconfirmed. And there's a set of, somewhere between eight and 12 probably, agreements that are part of this sort of suite of Rose Quarter agreements, and they need to be gone through and updated to reflect this new arrangement. One of the things that does have to happen is the original ground lease will be transformed with the ownership transfer into more of an operating agreement, sort of more like what we have at the stadium and at the Veterans Memorial Coliseum. So most of the business points and terms will remain the same, but translating those documents into something that will work for this five-year bridge deal is a fair amount of work for our legal team. In addition, we have some due diligence work to do on the arena itself. So we'll have a team of, you know, architects and engineers coming in to do an assessment so everybody has, you know, a full understanding of the condition of the building and any challenges that might be there. And we have some negotiation to do on various other business points as well.
No, that's helpful. So Carl, the additional parties that are necessary to meet with that require additional time, it's mostly legal? Or are there different parties besides...
Oh, so I think, if I'm not mistaken, you're referring to, in the terms of the long-term deal that's aspired, bringing additional parties to the table there. I think we're really talking about the state and possibly other entities as well.
Okay, I just wanted for the record here what some of those additional parties were. Not that it wasn't important to talk about the legal translation.
Right, well, and so I guess, yeah, I misunderstood. So the work that needs to happen before we can execute these documents for the bridge agreement is the legal work. The long-term agreement is starting those other conversations with other entities.
Okay, and that includes Albina Vision Trust?
So Albina Vision Trust and the team of Rip City Management are in regular communications. I think if you want to ask a specific question of Dwayne, that might be appropriate about that relationship.
But they're one of the invested parties in this dialogue.
They're in regular communication about all this, yeah.
That's all.
All right, very good. Any further questions? Commissioner Max?
Yeah, I have a couple of quick questions. Just bottom line, by passing this resolution today, how long can we be sure that the Blazers are going to definitely stay in town?
Question. I think that may be a question for the Blazers.
Yeah. A tough question.
Actually, my next question, I have two questions. By doing this, do we provide ourselves with some purity on both sides of the table that the Blazers are going to be here? I think everyone at the room wants to make sure that the Blazers are here for generations to come, and I want to make sure that this is part of what we're achieving by this resolution today. And the second question I want to ask is, and it's been referenced here, what's the relationship between the resolution we're passing today and this larger vision of reimagining and revitalizing the neighborhoods surrounding the Moda Center? Can we unpack both of those two, just so people, especially people at home, can track what we're doing?
Yeah, absolutely. I think I can take that answer to one answer to both your questions, which is really, this is the first step to what will be a long-term extension that we'll work on with the city and again, other key stakeholders. And so, you know, we realized we needed more time, and so the goal really is to get to work on that as soon as we're done with this document and start to build that out. And then as for the Rose Quarter as a whole, again, this was a really key first step. And going to Commissioner Ryan's comments, we share the vision with Albina Vision Trust that I said earlier, which was, we want that district, that neighborhood, to be a thriving place 365 days a year. And so having the Rose Quarter and the Moda Center at the center of that with 1.5 million-plus visitors a year is really key to making that happen.
Great, I love those answers. No more questions, Mr. Mayor.
Very good. Commissioner Ryan. Oh, I just forgot to put my hand down. All right, very good. This is a resolution. Please call the roll.
Rubio. Thank you for this presentation. And overall, I'm very supportive of this bridge agreement. For the last 30 years, we've been proud partners with one of the most significantly significant parts of our city, which is the Portland Trailblazers. We're very, very proud of this team and very happy to see the future that we're crafting together to make sure that we keep this team in our city. And with this agreement, we can be that bridge that allows us to work together towards that long-term agreement. I also want to give a special thanks to Jody Allen and Apology Allen. I also want to give a special thanks to Jody Allen and the Paul G. Allen Foundation, not only for their continued investment in this team and the facilities, but for the support and commitment that they've demonstrated for this team and to Blazers fans and for our city. And I also want to echo the mayor's comments and appreciate Dwayne Hankins for his exceedingly collaborative and steadfast partnership in reaching this agreement and for a vision that really centers community in creating an entertainment and community hub and really for aligning this vision with the Albina Trust vision as neighbors. That's really important and that really comes through. I also want to give a big thank you to Carl and Director Jordan for your leadership and stewardship as well throughout this process. And finally, I want to appreciate also the broader team at Moda, which is everybody who's behind the scenes, all the workers that come in day in and day out and the thousands, hundreds and or maybe thousands that make it successfully run every single day. So I'm very excited about what the future holds for Blazers and for the Rose Quarter and our desire to make this a world-class hub. So happy to vote aye.
Ryan.
Yes, this is a good day. I'm glad that we're here. Carl and I have had a few conversations. I think my colleagues know when I'm distracted, it's usually because I'm looking at a sports ball score. So I tend to be, I have six older brothers, it was the only way to survive. So I'm a big sports ball fan. And the first time I skipped school was in 1977 to go to the championship parade. And we all know that's what we really want. And so, you know, this feels like what we have to do at this moment to hang in there. And it was helpful to hear just a little bit more about the nuances. We had a good conversation. Was that yesterday? Thanks for coming into my office yesterday, Dwayne. And it seems like we were doing the best we can with what we have at this moment. And we had dialogue around when, in fact, there could be a change of ownership. Because rest in peace, Paul Allen, it's been over five years. I think that that's just the uncertainty that's out there. So it's not an elephant in the room, it's just a fact. And so I want to make sure that we had something written that would allow that negotiation to take place without it being in the way. And so that was cleared up. And I just can't imagine living in my hometown without the Trailblazers. It's been real challenging for all of us to hang in there through four quarters of games. I almost don't want to see the alerts at halftime anymore. Sorry, that last night was one of those games, right? Yeah. So we have to do everything we can to keep our beloved team here in Portland. It's a big deal. I vote aye.
Gonzalez.
Trailblazers have been central to our city's identity for decades. They contribute not only to our community's spirit and social fabric, but to our local economy, generating $600 million annually and supporting 6,000 jobs. They are critical, critical part of both our city and the broader metropolitan region. The agreement ensures that Moda Center remains the home court for the Trailblazers, at least till 2030 and hopefully well beyond that, while also funding major renovations there over the course of the next decade. It also affirms a commitment between the city and the team, not just to each other, but also to our collective future and recovery as a city, as we look to build our future as Portlanders together. I want to thank the mayor's team as well as the team at Rip City Management for all the time and efforts that went into this agreement, one that works to build for the long term while the city looks to revitalize the area around the Moda Center and create a district that is accessible, dynamic, and vibrant. I also want to thank Blazers ownership for their commitment to the City of Portland. I vote aye.
Mappes.
I'm delighted to support this resolution, colleagues. I believe that because the actions we take today are an important step towards keeping the Blazers in Portland for generations to come. I am truly proud to play a very small role in making that happen. I'm also going to vote in favor of this resolution because I believe the actions we take today will be an important step towards reimagining and revitalizing the neighborhoods around the Moda Center. And so I'm very proud to play a small role in keeping that discussion going. And while I often, if not always, agree with my good friend Dan Ryan, I also, I do want to push back a little bit. This is a great time to check out the Blazers. I will tell you, we have a young team. We have a fun team to watch. I will tell you, it is, at this particular moment in time, it is frankly more affordable to go to a Blazer game than any time I can kind of remember. You can literally take your family to a Blazers game for less than it costs to go to a movie. I also really want to encourage you to take public transportation there. So if you take public transportation into a Blazer game, go watch, get a couple of good tickets and a hot dog or two. I did that very recently and had just a really wonderful time. So if you haven't been down to the Moda Center, you should really check it out. And I would also say, you know, this is a rebuilding year for our team, which actually is a fun time to watch these young kids kind of grow. And it'll be even more exciting in years to come. So this is the best time ever to be a Blazers fan. And I'm proud to be a Blazers fan and I'm proud to vote aye on this resolution. And I can't wait to see the exciting things that are going to happen in this space in the years to come.
Wheeler.
I can't top that. I mean, that's the best PR you can get, Dwayne.
Yeah.
It didn't cost you anything. But Commissioner Mappes.
Not him, not me, yeah.
He's 100% right. I vote aye. Thanks. Thanks for all your hard work. We really appreciate it. Resolution is adopted. Look forward to continuing your work hard together. Thank you. Thank you. So colleagues, we're on a time-certain schedule, but if I'm correct, we can still do the four fifths, can't we? That doesn't have a time certain attached, does it?
No, it doesn't.
They're not here? Yeah, why don't we? Because otherwise, we're just going to be cooling our heels for 28 minutes. We'll take a recess.
When do we come back?
I haven't decided yet. It depends how quickly we can get.
All right, what's the next one?
Don't go far away. Oh, you're here.
Either monument.
We're on recess. Do you want a five-minute break? We'll take a five-minute recess. We'll convene at.
I'm good. I was just talking with the constituents.
You need five. Let's just, we'll give you a couple of minutes to settle in. We'll reconvene at 2:35 or in recess.
Looking awfully confident for a monument discussion.
Amendment Public Art Code to Establish Public Monuments Policy and Review Criteria.
All right, Commissioner Ryan.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor Wheeler. And also I want to acknowledge Commissioner Rubio. She got this work started. And it was handed off to me at the beginning of 2023. And I'm excited that we're actually at a place where we're going to have a code package for public monuments. It was something that was not there during the unrest of 2020, when we could have used it. I think all of you know that for nearly four years, our city has grappled with this monuments issue. The events of 2020 only underscore our city's need for a more structured approach to how we manage and respond to concerns about public monuments. In my first year as a city commissioner, I took initiative to bring solutions to this conversation. And in 2021, when I introduced the resolution to fully restore and return the Thompson Elk Fountain, which I'm happy to report is finally moving along. And thank you Water Department for playing your part to see that through. Anyway, what happened with that is the city council unanimously supported that effort. Yes, it's a lot easier to discuss animals over people. Anyway, onward. And I believe my colleagues will also support this policy, which creates a complaint process for public monuments owned by the city. This is about giving Portlanders a formal and constructive way to express their views and participate in the decision-making process regarding our public monuments. The policy before council today establishes a complaint system for monuments, which does three things. One, it defines public monuments in the city code as distinct from other forms of public art. Two, it identifies several types of criteria for public monuments, which could be considered for review. And finally, it establishes a process for public input and review of the monuments in the city. This policy is a step forward towards more inclusive and thoughtful stewardship of our city's cultural and historical symbols. With this, I now turn it over to my staff member, Darian Jones, who will delve into the details of this policy. Darian, thank you for being here. Thank you for the many, 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 many hours of work we put into this. And I turn it over to you.
Thank you, Commissioner and Council. For the record, my name is Darian Jones. I'm the Senior Policy Director of Arts, Culture, and Equity. And I appreciate the opportunity to share this code package with you all today. And I'll let the clerk pull up the slides. So as this council is aware, in 2020, the City of Portland, like many cities across the country, participated in a national conversation focused on the reevaluation of historical monuments and a clarion call from the public for greater introspection about who and what is memorialized in public space. There are about 170 outdoor sculptures shared between Multnomah County and the City of Portland in the Public Arts Collection. During the protests in 2020, four statues were toppled: Presidents Abraham Lincoln, George Washington, Theodore Roosevelt, as well as Oregonian publisher Harvey Scott. Can you pull up the next slide, please? Another statue, Promised Land, was also damaged in 2020. And as a result, the city placed all five monuments in storage. I would also like to add that in 2021, oh, sorry, re-reading that. In response to all of this, the City Arts Program launched the Portland Monuments Project to develop and implement a thorough and inclusive engagement strategy and action plan centered around community dialogue and public input. The city applied to the Mellon Foundation in early 2023 and for funding to support the work and was awarded a $350,000 grant. At the same time, in early 2023, the City Arts Program commissioned Lewis and Clark College to convene the Portland Monuments and Engagement Process Committee to produce the public engagement report around monuments and memorials in Portland. This was accepted by this council in July. The report outlined specific public engagement recommendations for the city. This included a website dedicated to memory and memorial work, walking tours, public talks and conversations, arts program, and the creation of a monuments archive. The report also recommended that the city adopt a monuments review guidelines as a tool for decision-making about the five toppled monuments or removed monuments and about monuments that may be contested in the future. This is perfect as we move into the next slide. The policy for city council consideration today provides updates to Title V, specifically 5.74085 of the Public Monuments Review Policy. The policy was informed by work of the New York City's Majorial Advisory Commission on City Art, Monuments, and Markers in 2018 and on the Monument Review Guidelines that were drafted by RAC in 2021. It was also informed by monuments policies adopted in cities similar to Portland, including Chicago, San Francisco, and Vancouver. The first draft of this policy was open for public comment on January 30. And after extensive community partner input, a revised policy was published on February 23, last Friday, and more updates were made to the poly just yesterday afternoon. The Public Monuments and Review Policy seeks to outline criteria for review of monuments and identifies ways for complaints to be lodged with the city, specifically with the City Arts Program. If a complaint comes in, the City Arts Program will determine whether it's further reviewed. If it is recommended for further review, the City Arts Program can take action using one of two routes. The first is for the City Arts Program to perform research and conduct public engagement activities that will inform a report to the city council. This report would provide recommendations about the monuments in question. However, it's important to note that if a monument were removed, such as the case of the five in 2020, the report will require further public engagement activities and the addition of interpretive and educational elements to the monuments if they were removed by public request and recommended for return. The second option would be a recommendation to form a monuments advisory commission to review the specific monuments and questions. The Public Advisory Commission would work with the City Arts Program to conduct public engagement activities and research related to the monument. The commission would be responsible for working with the City Arts Program to produce a report with recommendations to the city council. If a review is not warranted because the criteria outlined in the policy are not met, the City Arts Program has 90 days to respond and issue a response to the complaint. The policy, to be clear, does not make a decision on any one monument. Rather, it creates a way for the community to peacefully engage in the process. And with that, I'll take any questions in the next slide.
Questions? How does this dovetail with the policy that you're currently undertaking around monuments generally? What is this doing that that process won't do?
Yeah, this creates a way for the public to respond if there are more monuments that have considerable complaints that come up in the next year. Separately, the Mellon Grant is to support public engagement and creative programming around monuments in general. And this is supporting that by creating a process that the public can engage through those actions.
What constitutes a complaint and how many complaints would trigger action?
It's a good question. There are nine criteria that could warrant a complaint. And it's based on those criteria that the City Arts Program will review the complaint and then decide if it warrants further review. An example could be 50 Portlanders coming to city council to make it known that they would like a public monument removed. Another example could be a series of letters that the public sends to city council asking for consideration of a public monument to be removed.
Commissioner Gonzalez.
What's the timing for restoration of the Washington Monument or others described here?
That's a great question, Commissioner Gonzalez. Our office is working with the City Arts Program to produce a report very soon. Once this policy is adopted by the city council, that would recommend the return of the three presidents and start the process to look at de-ancienting some of the other monuments. The process to actually get the presidents back up in the public is a little bit different. The Regional Arts and Culture Council, which is currently contracted as our public arts agent, has been working to get the insurance claims submitted a lot last year. They had those filed earlier this year. The city has not yet received those funds yet. Once we receive the funds, the repairs on the monuments will begin, and then they will go back into the public. We anticipate that once we receive the funds, it will take at least nine months for the repairs to be complete and for those monuments to go back up.
Think I'm good for now. Thanks.
Any further, Commissioner Mappes?
Yeah, just to thank you for the presentation. I have a question on the Monuments Review Commission, which we propose to set up. Who appoints that?
Yeah, that's a great question, Commissioner Maps. Some of the pieces and parameters around that commission are still under works on the City Arts Program. To be able to make that recommendation, there would need to be a process for recruitment as well as ways to identify those members. Later this year, there will be more code packages from the City Arts Program as it transitions into the Office of Arts and Culture. We know that contract with the Arts Council, RAC, is expiring, and the city will likely need an arts council. We would like to look towards creating that arts council and potentially additional revisions to integrate this committee into that one going forward.
Okay, that's helpful, and we'll watch that, and I hope that we can be -- I hope we have inter-office conversations as we think about that. I think you mentioned that RAC is sunsetting. Is that -- or can you remind us again what the city's current and medium-term relationship with RAC is?
Yeah, absolutely. The Regional Arts and Culture Council is an independent nonprofit that's contracted with the city of Portland. Our annual contract expires on June 30, and the city still wants to support in working with the Regional Arts and Culture Council, which is why we're in negotiations around a bridge contract for the public art program, which this would specifically be impacting. So the public art program, we're insulating through additional bridge contract work over the next year to continue that program.
Okay, great, and that kind of gets to the question that I was trying to set up here, which is, I believe, some sections of the ordinance before us today refer to RAC, but Section 5, I'm told, makes references to RAC. Do those timelines?
Yes.
Think in a way that makes sense? I'm still not quite sure.
Yeah, sorry for cutting you off, Commissioner.
Oh, no, no.
There will be more code packages. Our attorney, Nancy, from the attorney's office is here today, and she's currently working with different bureaus, BDS, others, to find where RAC is in the city code, and we will be doing a complete overhaul later this year before the July 1 date comes. Expect us back here.
Okay, thank you very much. I may jump back in with another question, but I'll let Commissioner Rubio go.
Commissioner Rubio.
Thank you, and I have a similar question about the commission, so thank you for your question, Commissioner. Can you talk to me -- and you probably said this, but just from my understanding, what is the effective date of the policy once it goes into -- once we vote it in? Will it be immediate?
My understanding is this policy would come back for a second reading on March 6, and then if it were adopted by council, be effective on April 6 or April 7.
Okay, so fairly soon. And so, second follow-up question is then, is what is the timeline for the committee, because it will have to be set up for this -- in effect, for this policy to be implemented or not?
The City Arts Program would have to make a recommendation to appoint a committee, and it would also have to be able to articulate those parameters for adopting and recruiting the members for the committee as well.
So in terms of like the lining up of the -- does one -- is one dependent on the other or not?
No, not at all.
Okay, thank you.
I have another question. So first of all, let me just say, I think it would be a thankless task to serve on this committee. This strikes me as potentially divisive, and I understand what you're trying to do here, and I get it, and you're trying to bring complex, difficult decisions into the public sphere, and I support that, by the way. But let me give you an example. Abraham Lincoln, I think he was a great leader, but I know for a fact that there's people in this community who do not think that. They have very different opinions than I do on the greatness of Abraham Lincoln. How is a committee going to be able to resolve that conflict? It's a question of history, perspective, background, tradition. From my perspective, great leader, but somebody else might have a legitimate concern based on their own perspective, which is very different than mine. How does a committee resolve that conflict?
Yeah, the committee will likely undertake a series of research opportunities to meet with community members and be able to produce a recommendation that speaks to that. I think in the case of Abraham Lincoln, for the city of Portland, we've had at least three and a half years of engagement around this topic. I would say it started with the South Park Master Plan in 2019, where members of the Native American community were specifically engaged by the Nahat group at the city to ask about their perspectives and experiences on those monuments, and there was an overwhelming sentiment that there should be more indigenous monuments and monuments of Black community members, but also when these monuments are up, that have already been erected, they should also have greater context and clarity that talks about the full story and honors the times in which people lived, because it's easy for us to look back in time and criticize the behaviors of folks today, but we also need to be able to talk about the world in which they lived at the same time.
Yeah, no question about it. I mean, wait till our great-grandchildren dissect our society today. They're going to have a field day. So if this is truly about education, I think that's great, and I think that additional context would be helpful. Commissioner Gonzalez.
Did you have some more, Commissioner Maps? I wasn't sure.
I was going to ask another question, but I've been chatting for a bit. I thought I'd create some space for you to get in here.
Well, I'm just -- thank you. I'm just jumping into some of the language, and I think you used the example that speaks to A1 with this, that there's a sustained and significant adverse public reaction or reasonable large-scale committee opposition to the public monument. How do we allow citizens of Oregon or Portland to speak out on a particular monument that they find objectionable, but don't make decisions by, you know, the mob ripping things down, right? When I look at this language, I mean, what we're partially responding to is what occurred in 2020, and you have, depending on how you describe it, you know, protesters, vandals, the mob, making decisions about what statues they found objectionable, a relatively small group getting to make that decision for everyone else. And so I'm just curious, how do we define A1 here?
Yeah, that's a great question, Commissioner, and it was open to be a little bit subjective because we know that sustained and adverse could look different for different community members. I think it's really important to note that this policy doesn't endorse the actions of 2020, and anything such as, you know, damage to public property is a crime under Oregon State statute. What this seeks to do is provide an avenue for people to know that there is actually a process to express these complaints to the city and encourage them to use that process versus vandalism or criminal behavior.
Got it. And then just playing through A4, the subject or impact -- well, actually, I'm just going at three. The community members most affected by the monument's historical and cultural context have expressed a negative impact on community well-being. So applying that to Abraham Lincoln, for example, would indigenous communities be the ones who define the context, or would it be the Black community that would define Abraham Lincoln's context? Who defines that?
I think it would be the -- sorry, Commissioner, I think it'd be the community of the complaint that we would receive from the community, and reviewing of that complaint would let us know who's the complaint in.
Okay. This is a tough area. There's no two ways about it, right? I mean, there's a lot of opinions. It's hard, so it's -- but I'll pass the mic to Commissioner Maps.
Commissioner Maps.
Do we have public testimony on this?
Yeah.
I'd like to hear public testimony, and maybe some of my questions will be addressed there.
Commissioner Rubio.
I just have a quick question about -- so, well, yeah, maybe I'll wait till public testimony.
Public testimony, how many folks do we have signed up?
We have seven people signed up.
Very good. Three minutes each. Name for the record. Kealan will call you up in order, or if you're online, same deal. Just name for the record, please.
I did.
Thank you, Mayor. First up, we have Stephen Kefory.
Not here. A lack of meeting. Autumn off-guard. On his way.
Okay.
If he shows up later, we'll call him.
Yep.
Great, good.
Next up, Brooke Best.
Brooke is out of state on a family emergency, and testimony is also on her way.
Okay.
Aubrey Russell.
Hold on.
Welcome, Aubrey.
Hi, Aubrey Russell. In making a policy to remove monuments, you might want to consider these questions: public opinion, a timeframe, who's on a monuments review commission? The answers are, public opinion is essentially left out, there is no stated timeframe, and we don't know who might be on a review commission. First, public opinion. Public opinion is not mentioned in this policy. Neither is public meeting, public comment, public notice meeting, public testimony, online survey, online comment, or polling. Public opinion and its generally understood meaning is absent, since city council will be getting a recommendation from the City Arts Program about potentially removing monuments. You might like to know that the recommendation is based on an understanding of public opinion. Also, you will vote on this recommendation, so you might yourselves like to know what the general public feels. We've heard lots about the City Arts Program and Darian Jones recruiting partners to monuments work, but you will want to ensure that you have an accurate, unbiased view of public opinion. Second, timeframe. In this proposed code, there's no timeframe for responding to public calls to remove monuments. Next, there's no timeframe for the City Arts Program to initiate a process. Next, there's no timeframe for conducting public engagement, and finally, there's no timeframe for presenting a report to city council. For your benefit, there should be a precise timeframe. Third, the monuments review commission. The draft code does not say who will appoint the monuments review commission. I believe that the mayor should appoint the monuments commission. I think the commission would benefit by including two former elected public officials, a professional historian and a representative from a historic preservation group. PHLC, in its last state of historic preservation report, suggested that a preservationist be included in a, quote, "open forum" as part of a, quote, "robust public process." But your proposed policy does not include that or a representative from the PHALC itself, which they also suggested. Finally, I want to revisit, number one, public opinion. I'm not saying that the city staff has to follow public opinion, but the sorts of curated community views that the City Arts Program tends to favor can be augmented by knowing what the broad public thinks. This makes -- well, having more knowledge is better than intentionally having less knowledge when making a recommendation, making a decision. This is the wrong policy now for removing legally protected historic resources. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Henry Kunowski.
Welcome, Henry.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council. Thank you for this opportunity to testify. I also want to express my appreciation to Darian Jones for his excellent work with the community members to bring this issue forward. I have had many conversations with him, and basis of those conversations have been centered around a comment that Commissioner Ann Ryan made during his press release of this proposal, which was, his goal is that this is a successful process, and we share that goal with him. The proposed amendments to the current city policy, public art policy, as proposed from Commissioner Ryan's office in the City Arts Program, specifically Chapter 574.85, public monuments criteria, is an ambiguous, ambitious undertaking that had its beginning in 2018 and was memorialized in a July 22, 2020 confidential memo from RAC. In that memo, a five-face process was discussed to decide which monuments and sculptures are to be removed. That policy involved into a new de-ascensionation -- excuse me -- policy proposed by RAC, which has now been modified to become the current proposal policy for considering monuments and artwork for possible removal. Currently, there are 10 monuments and sculptures that are listed on the city's 1984 Historic Resource Inventory with a Rank I status, identifying it as a significant resource. And these 10 are also noted in the Oregon Historic Sites Database as considered eligible or contributing to the National Register of Historic Places. There are a total of 10 monuments that are listed as significant and could be subject to removal, outlined in the proposed arts policy amendment, should a complaint be filed. At this juncture in the proposed arts policy amendment, what is being called the five monuments, Lincoln, Roosevelt, Washington, Scott, and the Promised Land statues, would be considered under a later process as yet to be determined. The principal concern with this current proposal is that it fails to address past omissions to follow ex-dent city code, primarily Title 33, demolition of historic resources and demolition delay. Although the current amendment to the proposal under 574085B invites the Portland Historic Landmarks Commission to follow its own rules and purviews for consideration for demolition delay, for contributing resources. For these significant resources, the city already has a process under Title 33, and this code interface -- how will this code interface with the current proposal? They're at conflict with each other in terms of process and authorities. Finally, the proposed amendment does not reconcile the current 15 citations of the current rule and responsibilities held by RAC. With a contract extension is currently being discussed between RAC and the city, will these remaining 15 charges for RAC become the basis for a contract extension? The proposed art amendment also does not address several city code, capital asset, and disposable of capital assets, or state administrative rules, statutes, or federal nexus dealing with historic structures. Should the current amendment pass city council, how will the authorities cited above be addressed so as to avoid conflict during the policy amendment implementation, and which other laws and rules take precedent? Finally, there are so many organizations, nonprofits, involved in the process moving forward that could be, likely will be, part of the consideration that none of these individuals and organizations related to an arts commission or ad hoc group, we're recommending that those be excluded from receiving any contracts or payments from the city for their work on these advisory committees. Thank you.
Next up, we have Emma Colburn.
May I come up? I understand that my name was called. I just got here, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, Mr. Kefory, come on up.
Thank you so much.
You could just say your name for the record. We all know who you are, but thank you.
Thank you. Says right here. My name is Stephen Kefory, and I'm a member of an informal quodary of activists who love our city and want to protect our public assets. Henry is one of our members. I've sent you all a list of our members and their contact information. I want to make it clear that none of us are getting financially in any way from our activities. We're here to discuss the fate of the monuments torn down by vandals almost four years ago. So what we have here, ladies and gentlemen, is vandals for, city of Portland, zero, and I hope that you have -- I know that you have the opportunity, and I hope you take that opportunity to change that statistic soon. I first want to acknowledge the work of Darian Jones. Darian has been working very closely with us. He's been very supportive and very communicative. He returns to our emails within a day or two, and he's been very helpful in every step along the way. He's told us on many occasions, the policy you're evaluating today is a separate policy from the decisions that you will make on repairing and replacing the monuments that were damaged by vandals. He has stated the only connection between the two of them is a requirement that this draft policy must be adopted before the arts program makes a recommendation to you on the five statutes in question. While we do not understand the need for that first step, second step, we are fine with it happening so long as it does not delay the repair and replacement of those five statutes, or at least a recommendation on the repair of those statutes. those five statutes, or at least a recommendation on the repair of those statutes. It's indeed necessary, I hope that you will then vote on this report to accept it, and then, as soon as that's done, sometime in March, as we've been told by Darian several times, that you would take a recommendation from the Arts Program on the fate of those statutes. In addition, we're asking very specifically that an estimate of the cost and repair replacements for these monuments be made public. We've heard some numbers floated around. We've not seen anything public. If RAC, secondly, if RAC has not yet applied to the city insurers for reimbursement, and we understand that has not happened, we would like the city to take over one of you and make sure that happens. There's no excuse for waiting all these years to not find out, first of all, how much it's going to cost to repair and replace them, and secondly, to talk to the insurance people and find out how much they will give us. We would also like to ask that if there's going to be any additional, additive information, interpretive pieces to go along with these, and we understand that there will be, and we're very supportive of that, that the development of these additive informational pieces not delay the replacement. Get those things back up. Once they're back up, we'd be happy to work with you on, we have a lot of people who have a lot of knowledge in our group, help you, work with you on developing some interpretive information. We are grateful for this council's actions in repairing and replacing the Thompson Milk Fountain. We hope that you'll react in the same manner as you did with these, and let us again offer our technical assistance, which our group has a lot of. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Brooke Best.
Welcome, Brooke. Thank you for being here.
I'm actually not Brooke.
Oh, okay. For the record, please.
Good afternoon, Mayor Wheeler and members of the council. My name is Virginia Ellaby, and I am testifying on behalf of Brooke Best, who is unable to attend today's session. Both of us are members of the group that Stephen mentioned has been working on this issue for the past few years. This testimony addresses the criteria section of the proposed policy amending city code, Chapter 5.74, on public art. Commissioner Ryan has stated in a press release that the intent is to create a citizen complaint process for reviewing city-owned artwork and monuments. Our group supports this goal, but believes more work is needed to ensure Portland residents find the criteria easy to grasp and the complaint process easy to follow. The current draft, for example, does not indicate how one files a complaint. Will a letter to the City Arts Program suffice, or will residents need to fill out a special complaint form? Several of the nine criteria listed, moreover, need to be reworded to achieve Commissioner Ryan's goal, we believe. Most of those proposed, particularly the ones reflecting the criteria developed in RAC's 2021 deaccession proposal, seem more relevant to a city-initiated review process than a citizen-driven one. For example, the first one talks about sustained and significant adverse public reaction to a monument as grounds for a possible review. The City Arts Program presumably has identified yardsticks, concluding that the sustained and significant benchmark has been met, but the proposed code does not spell out for residents what yardsticks will be used to assess whether that benchmark has been met. If you're interested, I can explain later why that omission is problematic and provide other examples of proposed criteria that should be reworded. Recrafting the proposed criteria so they more clearly support a citizen-based complaint system is quite doable, as Philadelphia has demonstrated. For each of the three public complaint criteria listed, Philadelphia lays out the standards that will be used to determine whether the citizen's complaint merits a review of the artwork in question. One of them, for example, says that the sources and the strength of the historical evidence cited regarding the behavior of the individual being memorialized that runs counter to the city's values must be clear and ambiguous. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have one.
Can we share?
I'm sorry, the last part you just quoted, what was that from?
That was from, Philadelphia has a public art review model, and it was a quote from that.
If you don't mind sending that to my office, I'd appreciate it.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Next up, we have Emma Colburn.
Thank you for being here.
Portland is weird. Some people want to keep it that way, others embrace change. As someone raised here, the weirdness of my family runs deep and isn't going or coming because of a bumper sticker, so I say, bring on the Californians. Because, truth be told, a lot of the weirdness that happens in Portland could stand to change. For example, Portland's monuments are weird. When I'm out and about with my family, monuments to settler culture intrude into our afternoon. Sometimes I stop it, break, and break it down to my kids why their presence is inappropriate, because looking past such ignorant eyesores is not a privilege, and if it were, I would not choose to regenerate it. But sometimes I don't stop, because we're late for dance rehearsal or whatever other regular old thing we're doing, just trying to live a normal life in everyday neighborhoods where my kids can feel safe and proud to be who they are, where they are. My kids are Black, Indigenous, and German. But that most simple mother's mission gets interrupted by monuments to people who supported the oppression, erasure, and marginalization of our ancestors. Seventy percent of the figurative statuary that comes up when you search Portland monuments on Google Maps memorialize, yes, you guessed it, white men. And that's weird, because according to 2023 demographic data available on the Census Bureau website, only 32% of people living in Portland identify with that specific combination of racial, gender attributes. Even your body is three-fifths out of compliance with the ledger that the majority of our monuments speak. And what are our monuments saying? Let me read you a few titles. Paul Bunyan, The Coming of the White Man, Promised Land. It's weird to live in a place where in 2024, we have to explain why such homages to settler colonial culture are inappropriate. Yet this is what this document proposes to instruct publics to do. Under this policy, we would have to create a council of volunteers from, as it states, the most affected communities, to explain to your body why these monuments have no place in our city ledger. It's weird to task disadvantaged members of the community with the burden of convening a volunteer commission to explain to your body, who is sitting on payroll, why it is harmful to public health, inconsistent with public opinion, and just generally morally inappropriate to keep a ret, such statues. At risk of overusing the word weird, Webster tells me I can substitute alienating, so Portland monuments are alienating. That's why in 2020, two of them came down in a healing ritual practiced by members of our community, Indigenous to these lands, on the Indigenous Day of Rage. Three more came down in other ways. I did not participate, but I rejoiced at home with my kids, because they deserve to grow up in a landscape where monuments inspire awe in all of, in all that we are and have been, rather than alienation. And the actions of the toppled five are alienating. Washington profited off the enslavement of our African ancestors, and Scott perpetuated such anti-Black case in publishing. Roosevelt and Lincoln endorsed in different ways policies rooted in the obscene mythology of Indigenous extinction. Indigenous people are not extinct. They spoke to this body earlier this month about not resurrecting monuments that glorify the people who oppress, erase, and marginalize our ancestors. It is unclear how this policy interacts with the toppled five, yet regardless, this body ought instead to draft a policy on monument review that is rooted in the serious work of reparations. Funding listening sessions with Indigenous-led, community-based organizations about this document, or another document altogether, to create public policy that is truly public on monument review would be one such step towards repair. Many people who are here today would be happy to discuss this with you further, rather than pushing through a policy that does not reflect the public needs or opinions. My name is Emma Colburn, and this has been a public comment against adopting Draft 5.74.09, Public Monuments Review Policy. Thank you.
Thank you, Emma.
Next up, we have Stephen Griffith.
Welcome, Stephen.
Yes, thank you. It's a pleasure to be here today. My name is Stephen Griffith. I am a resident of Portland, a former school board member, and member of this community. Last time I testified before City Council was 30 years ago. And it's always a good sign to see two former members of the school board come out to a different public body and just try to offer thoughts and help you do the right thing. I have not been intimately involved in the monuments issue, and someone asked me to, if I would simply look at the draft policy and just see what I thought. So I offer these comments, and I have submitted my own, with as neutral and as good a spirit as I can, just to help us get to a good place. I think it's terrific to have a process by which both removed and unremoved monuments, those which are now in existence and those that may come in in the future, to have them reviewed, to see whether they're appropriate. And it's, so it's a really good thing. And I want to, and my first suggestion is, the way it's written, it's not really clear that the monuments will be processed, not only those which are removed, but ones which are unremoved and those which are in the future. And so I think you want to be sure that the language captures the universe there. My second thought, just based on that, is there are a couple of references to the affected community. It never mentions who the affected communities are. The way it's phrased, it talks about those who have been the victims of historical slavery and genocide and colonialism, okay? As an historian, you can kind of pull that out as Blacks and Native Americans. But in fact, there've been other communities that have been marginalized in the past, and I think that they should also be included, those that are subject to discrimination on the basis of religion, ethnicity, sexual orientation, disability. And so this would be a terrific point to open up the criteria, and not just make it about one or two or three communities, but list the kind of criteria that are used, for example, in some of the federal civil rights statutes. I didn't see any justification for, there's, it talks about the, whatever it is, the City Arts Program or its designee. I didn't see any justification at this point to validating the designee and just saying, well, it's up to the City Arts Program, so that can be a future issue, but I wouldn't put that in the policy right now. The other thing is, there are no timelines, and I think it's been, as Stephen Cefory mentioned, it's been four years now, and you've got an idea now of what you want to do. And so one of the signs that we know what we want to do is, we want to do it by a certain time. And so I think it would be very helpful upon the, acting on the initial report, to say that the final report shall be due back to the City Council by a time certain. I don't know enough about the, how much work is involved in my own mind, just reading, thinking about it. It'd be like that initial report. I think everybody knows what the monuments are that are going to trigger this. Have it due within 30 days. And then what about the actual final report? I suggest six months. There isn't any reason just to have it extended forever. I also had a number of other, I spent some time, suggestions about the individual criteria. I think at least one, if I can intrude just a little bit, I think there's one set of criteria that are not worthy of being consideration, that you should rule out, and those are the cost to protect the restored monument, or the cost to avoid any damage by bigots who may be attracted by it. That is not, I don't think the City of Portland is at that point yet. I think if a window is broken, you fix it. You don't worry about the next break. And I think you can pull those criteria out without any damage at all to the other good criteria. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Jared Essig.
Welcome, Jared.
Good afternoon, Mayor Wheeler, Commissioners, citizens of Portland and Multnomah County. My name is Jared Essig. I'm a representative of the Rose City Iron Front, in defense of constitutional government and rule of law. We do favor republican democracy and defend it against fascism and against totalitarian communism, and we seek radical reform rather than violent overthrow of the government. Part of that radical reform removes radically rethinking our monuments. To that end, I've engaged in a political action to deaccession these monuments back in 2020. My change.org petitions are the manner in which I provided a complaint process, and they're submitted as written testimony to this agenda item, and I encourage you to read them in detail. And for whatever process gets built, they'll be, they should be in that, that process of consideration as well. Now, on, there's a large building just west of, of the plaza, or just east of the plaza, that houses the county jail and the arraignment court and the police headquarters. It's known colloquially, colloquially as the Injustice Center. But on it are two very interesting quotes, one from George Washington and one from MLK Jr. The quote from George Washington says that "the administration of justice is the firmest pillar of good governance." Now, anyone who wants to put up that statue of George Washington, I challenge you to honor George Washington as well as I've just done right now, or to artistically reproduce him as accurately as I've done just right now. There's a quote from MLK Jr. that says, "Injustice anywhere is a threat to justice everywhere." Now, I don't support putting up statues of MLK Jr. or Indigenous Braves either. Recite their honor, their notable sayings, and recount their valorous deeds, if you wish to honor great men of the past. I learned this from my Jewish friends, Moses Maimonides in particular. Let me tell you something great that Abraham Lincoln did. The 1862 Homestead Act, which opened up millions of acres in the West to settlement. Just last week, Commissioner Beeson over at Multnomah County called this the biggest affirmative action program in the history of America, the greatest entitlement, and the biggest welfare program ever issued by the American government. And it might be kind of embarrassing to admit, but I, he might be right about that. So if we're going to honor Abraham Lincoln, let's provide that historical context. Now, there is an urgent issue that Portland is facing of public safety, murder epidemic, gun violence, like many other cities. A culture of incitement to violence is the probable cause, but city leaders have mostly ignored this, predictably asking for more DAs, more police, security guards, et cetera. I propose instead that we stop valorizing and promoting the force of arms and gun violence, and stop promoting it through public statuary that fetishizes brandished weapons, specifically deaccession the Spanish-American Soldier Monument that stands in the downtown Portland Civic Plaza with its brandished gun. We can remember the actions in Guam, the Philippines, and Cuba in a different way. Look at the Salem Capitol, has a World War II memorial as an example of how to create public statuary, or the Vietnam Memorial in Washington, DC. If you want to memorialize the past, that's how to do it. Thank you for letting me testify.
Thank you.
That completes testimony.
All right. Great. Further thoughts before I move this to second reading? I've just got one. Oh, sorry, is there somebody else?
No, no, there is an amendment that was proposed in the Agenda Updates Memo. Just want to flag that in case you wanted to move that amendment.
The amended version that was posted last week, yes, there was, the policy was updated last Friday, and so we need to.
Do a substitute.
Yes, it needs to be substituted. So there's a substitution that's on the agenda. I think we need to.
You're substituting the whole ordinance, is that correct?
No.
Just the exhibit.
So on Friday, there was the proposed policy that was posted. So on Friday, there was the proposed policy that was posted. In addition, there was also an exhibit that was a revision of the policy. It's been posted since Friday, but we have to officially substitute it into the record, I believe.
Okay. Commissioner, do you want to make a motion?
Some move.
Second. You have a motion and a second to add. Can you describe it again, just so we're all clear?
Yeah, I'd be happy to. So initially-
Just, is this a substituted amendment, an appendix? What is this?
Yes, it's a substitution of the policy that was posted. The policy that was posted was the draft from January 30th, and the correct version is the amended version that incorporates the public's feedback and edits, and that's the version that's being processed right now.
Okay, very good. Any further discussion? Commissioner Maps, you had your hand up.
Let's keep moving.
Okay. Call the roll.
Rubio.
Aye.
Ryan.
Thank you for putting this out so early to give the public a chance to engage with this policy. It was beyond what we usually do with any of our work. I vote aye.
Gonzalez.
Aye.
Maps.
Aye.
Aye.
The amendment's on the table. Commissioner Maps?
Yeah, I just wanted to express my appreciation for Commissioner Ryan for bringing this forward. I also very much appreciate the public testimony that we heard today. There, I think there were a lot of good ideas that were out today. There's a lot of stuff I'm still thinking about. I just want to say that over the next week, between now and when this comes back to council, I'd like to probably engage in Commissioner, with Commissioner Ryan's office about potential amendments. Frankly, at the moment, I don't, I think we definitely have some questions we want to pin down, and we may have some friendly amendments, but I hope that we can have these conversations in the spirit of collaboration.
We will. And I know that we've been in spirited dialogue about this for some time, especially the last two weeks with staff to staff, so we'll continue that. I just want to really thank Darian for her patience and persistence on this. I think it's okay to say that this was a stinker of an assignment that was handed off to me in 2023, and it really needed a lot of development. And I appreciate that Commissioner Rubio brought some outside intelligence to this. And the spirited dialogue on monuments is exactly what we're supposed to have as a community. We must move beyond the denial and the whitewashing, if you will, and from also the retaliation and revenge. It's like there's this wonderful world in between those two. And that world is a holistic restoration of truth and reconciliation. It's the honest history that we all want and deserve as Portlanders. So I look forward to moving this forward, and then we'll have the big part two coming up by the end of March.
Yep, the report.
All right, thanks.
Commissioner Rubio.
I just wanted to lift up also what was referenced in testimony. It was connected to my previous question about a historian. Can you talk a little bit about, just really briefly, and I had talked with Commissioner Ryan, so I know that there's, there's interest in that, but want to really underscore the importance of having a historian that tells the full picture of, you know, in historical context of surrounding some of these monuments. Can you talk about what the plan is for that?
Yeah, we will be developing the recruitment process to identify how to select those members and identify them. I know some other council offices have proposed ideas around this council identifying members and being able to select them in the process going forward. The City Arts Program will need time to stand up this commission in the process for it, just like the Police Accountability Commission. I wouldn't expect this to be up and running once it's adopted. We'll be building those systems to move it forward as well, too.
Okay, I'm speaking specifically about the historian. So they're going to be on the committee, or is it going to be a consultant, too? I guess I want to know where that, where it's going to sit.
In the contract that you signed with Louis Sinclair?
Or any. I'm not speaking in particular about that. I'm just saying, we had talked before about the importance of having that perspective moving forward in what you're doing. So I was just curious about where that will come in.
Commissioner Rubio, can I ask a clarifying question? So are you asking, is there going to be an historian on the Monument Review Committee?
Not specifically the committee. I'm just, anywhere in the project, like, yeah, maybe it's the committee. That's the answer to one of my questions, but.
I believe, if I'm hearing the question correct, if, is there a historian on the monuments advisory review board, or is there a historian on the monuments work in general?
And what is the plan to have a historian on the monuments project in general, whether it's on the advisory or anywhere else?
Oh, yeah. We have commitments from the Oregon Historical Society to work with us as partners. We've also gotten commitments from the Ladies of Mount Vernon Association, which owns George Washington's home in Virginia, and they're will be helping us with the interpretation and creative elements for the future part of the project. In terms of the advisory commission, we would like to work with the City Arts Program to be able to identify ways to recruit those people with the historical expertise for that public advisory board.
So I'll just say this. At my peril, admittedly, there is no consensus on history. As we become a more diverse society, looking through the rearview mirror becomes an almost esoteric exercise. And I have a concern about this process. My concern is that this just becomes one more way that we become divided and angry at each other and start casting stones. And I hope that's not the case. You know, we heard seven people give testimony today, and I heard an entire spectrum of perspectives. And again, I sort of get back to my question, whether it's the city council, or whether it's a delegated group of people, whether it's historians, whether it's artists, how do you reach a consensus opinion? Because it won't be objective. There might be objective elements, but at the end of the day, you have to pick winners and you have to pick losers. And I'm sitting here thinking whether or not we should have, I mean, I don't think anybody's opposed to the elk, right? I mean, at least I, or maybe somebody is. I haven't heard of anybody who's opposed to the elk. Bring back the elk. That's what everybody's saying. Animals are fine. Animals are fine. Where we run into problems is when it's people. When we are honoring people on public spaces, that's where it starts to get really messy and really divisive. And so I'm going to think on this question over the course of the time between this first reading and the second reading, and it's purely an ROI question. Is the return worth it to honor people on public property, given the cost that it imposes to our community in terms of divisiveness, separating us, fragmenting us, frankly, just pissing us off? And leaving this session today, I have two thoughts. Number one, I'm not convinced yet that the ROI is positive. Second of all, I heard uniformly from across the spectrum that you did a great job of listening. And I want to acknowledge that. That's, that's hard to pull off. This is as close to a police accountability conversation as we have. There's no other bodies that are as emotional, people invest in as heavily, opinions are as diverse as police accountability and oversight. This comes very, very close in my mind. So it's going to have a, need to have that same level of thoughtfulness and sensitivity. And what I'm hearing is you've listened really well to different opinions. And I just want to acknowledge that. Public employees get a lot of grief from the public right now, and it sounds like you really did a nice job. And I want to just personally acknowledge that and thank Commissioner Ryan for deploying you in this way. So I'll be listening, asking a lot of questions between now and next week. But I just hope that this is something that brings us together and not something that ultimately turns out to be one more way that Portlanders find to divide ourselves.
And if I, if I could respond, Mayor, I totally welcome that, and just want to reiterate that the policy isn't a monument removal policy by any means. It's just to review the monuments and public art that we have in the collection and to consider the public's complaints. I think you just spoke to something really eloquently, Mayor, about the future in terms of how do we come together as a community. And this isn't an ascension policy for creating monuments, which a lot of people have also talked to us about. This was specific about the issue at hand. We do hope that the public engagement activities and the Melon Grant and those future activities allow for those conversations to happen so that we can actually talk about history in the full context that it is.
Yeah, thank you. I appreciate it. Great. I was going to ask about where's Kerry Timchuck in all this, because he's probably the first guy I would ask for a perspective on this, and it sounds like you're already working with him in the Oregon Historical-
They're one of our advisors, yeah.
I was pleased to hear that. Great, thank you. If there's nothing else, this, thanks, everybody who testified. This is a first reading of a non-emergency ordinance. It moves to second reading.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next issue, where did I go? Ah, 194. We can now do that, absolutely. 194, this is an emergency ordinance.
Amend downtown business incentive credit code to expand eligibility.
Colleagues, this next item is an emergency ordinance to expand the geographic boundaries for eligibility in the downtown business incentive tax credit program to all sub-districts within the central city. This is an important enhancement to a first-of-its-kind program. It's shown early signs of success and is needed to further encourage employer investments, positive foot traffic, and vibrancy throughout or revitalize central city. As you all know, the city council originally created this program through unanimous approval in September of 2023. This incentive initially targeted the four sub-districts of the central city where Eco-Northwest had indicated the most acute economic distress based on vacancy, foot traffic, and employment data. At that time, we promised to closely monitor the program performance and to enhance it with agility as we move forward. Based on the early successes of the program that we've seen to date, which our colleagues from the Revenue Division will speak to more momentarily, we're now acting again decisively to expand it into other areas where the opportunity exists. To be clear, our earlier action was not taken to undervalue the challenge of commercial vacancies throughout our central city, but rather to acknowledge our own limited resources and our need to learn more about this first-of-its-kind innovation. This incentive is working as a leverage point for taxpayers that, but for meaningful tax exemption like this, may choose to relocate outside of our city and community, bringing their investments, their employees, and their community involvement with them. The positive foot traffic these employers drive is critical for small business spending, public space activation, and community vibrancy. As we also know, incentivizing commercial leases in this manner is not a panacea to the challenges our central city faces, which is precisely why it's paired with many other community safety and livability initiatives in my administration's Central City Recovery Plan. Clearly, public safety and livability are foundational to revitalizing urban core, and these remain my top priorities as mayor. We appreciate all the constructive feedback that was shared last September and since that time in response to this program. The expansion proposal before us today is due in large part to that feedback and to those requests from the community. Thank you to my colleague, Commissioner Rubio, for co-sponsoring this item with me. I also want to acknowledge Jillian Shoney in her office for their partnership and collaboration. I also want to appreciate the work of Ken McGar in the city attorney's office, as well as Tyler Wallace and Celita Holt in the Revenue Division. I'll now turn it over to Commissioner Rubio for any opening comments she'd like to make before we welcome the presentation from our invited expert from the Revenue Division. Commissioner?
Thank you, Mayor. When we passed this item in September, I expressed that as a commissioner in charge of community and economic development, it was my intent to show our community that we were doing all we can to ensure that we're a safe and thriving city for our businesses, big and small. And I'm really pleased to see the interest that this program has had and that it has become a key tool for retention of employers in our central city. Before I hand it off to Andrew and the other city staff to speak into, about this in detail, I just want to reiterate that we are on a path to recovery because we have poor, great people working really hard, including everyone in this room who knows and believes in Portland's best and highest potential, and who are willing to try new things to get us there. So with that in mind, I will pass it on to staff to start the presentation.
And before Celita gives her presentation, I just want to acknowledge that I understand there are some people who need to testify and leave fairly quickly. So after the staff presentation, we'll hear public testimony before we ask questions, if that's okay, Colleen. Okay, Celita Holt, interim Tax Division Manager from the Revenue Division. Welcome. Thanks for being here.
Thank you. So good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. Thank you for having me here. I'm Celita Holt, the interim Tax Division Manager at the City of Portland Revenue Division. Our office administers the downtown business incentive credit, and we call it DBI for short, so I'll be saying DBI throughout the presentation. This emergency ordinance is to expand the geographic boundaries to all sub-districts within the central city. The current eligible DBI boundary include the following sub-districts: Lower Albina, Downtown, Lloyd, and Old Town Chinatown. If expanded, the districts will include Central Eastside, West End, Pearl, Goose Hollow, University South Downtown, and South Waterfront. There's no other material changes to the program at this time. So right now, I'm going to start off with a brief recap of the program. So the incentive offers up to $250,000 tax credit per business. It's limited to the lesser of 1% of the City of Portland income subject to tax, as shown on the business license tax return in the year of origination, or $30 per square footage of the leased space. And the program is capped at $25 million. To qualify for the credit, a company must lease new space or extend a lease for at least four years during 2023 or 2024 in the district, or they must own and occupy a building within the district. They also must keep at least 15 full-time employees physically working half-time in the district. To claim the credit, a business must first apply for the credit, and then once the application is approved, the credit is then divided by four, and the business will claim one-fourth of the credit over four consecutive tax periods, beginning with either the 2023 or the 2024 business license tax return. The due date for submitting the application for the tax year 2023 is January 31, 2024, so that is expired now. But if this ordinance is passed, we will extend the due date. And the due date for submitting the application for tax year 2024 will be January 31, 2025. So I did bring a report to show you guys, and Council Clerk, can you share that? Thank you. Okay, so I was warned that this might be too small, so sorry. Let's see. So as of last Monday, we received 61 applications, of which 17 were approved, 10 are currently being reviewed, and 34 were denied. Of the 17 approved applications, the total maximum approved estimated credit is $5 million, meaning we have $20 million remaining to be distributed. The 2023 returns have not yet been filed, so this is not the actual DBI credit, but an estimate based on square footage. We will have more concrete numbers when the returns are filed. And right now, the downtown district had the most applications and the most approvals with a maximum approved credit of 3.16 million. Of the 34 denied applications, they were, they were denied for one or more reasons, one of the largest reasons being that they were not within the boundary. And 24 of the 34 denied businesses were not within the boundary. The less frequent denial reason was due to the business having less than 15 employees. Industry type. So there are 40 different industries that the applications represent. The largest number of applicants are full-service restaurants, office of lawyers.
I'm sorry to interrupt.
Yeah, yeah, go ahead.
Is there, some of the commissioners are having trouble seeing this. Is there where you expand this, maybe?
Yeah, let me see if I can zoom in a little bit.
When you read the denial reasons, you read two of them, but I just can't see.
Yeah, so the denial, so this is not all-inclusive, this report right here. So the denial reasons are on this report, or actually, okay, never mind, they are. So they're on the second row.
Ah.
Yeah, and so the first column, second row, so denial reasons. So there's less than 15 employees. Okay, can you guys see that?
So less than, 15 is the smallest.
Yes, and then-
Not within bound, okay.
Yep, not within boundaries, one of them, and then the least commencement not met is another one.
Why was the decision made that you had to have more than 15 employees?
Yes. Is that something you want to answer now, or wait till later?
I've always been curious about that.
Well, actually, go ahead.
Yeah, so in the past, we did talk about having, what, like, two to five employees, but then we realized that it would just be too many businesses. And then we, there is a correlation between the number of employees and the size of a business. And so it seems like they wouldn't have, had much of an incentive for, for doing the DBI credit and staying in the city because they already pay like a minimum tax or close to. So we thought the, it wouldn't provide enough incentive for them to participate.
Okay. It's not intuitive, because we all know that our small businesses have probably suffered the most, and they're the ones also had to come back. They couldn't stay home on Zoom. They had to show up and serve their customers, so.
So that's why we're thinking 15, because they would bring more foot traffic to downtown, and so they could possibly visit those smaller businesses.
Okay, so-
Okay, so left off at the less frequent denial reasons was due to the business having less than 15 employees. Then we talked about the industry type, and this is actually shown on the bottom of the report, and so there's 40 different industries that the applications represent. And so there's full-service restaurants, lawyers and office of lawyers, hotels, motels, and then restaurants and other eating places. And the largest approved are hotels and motels, and that doesn't show it on there. These right here, it's just showing the total number of applicants.
Okay.
Employee size, as for the size of the businesses based on employees, unfortunately, we don't have the total number of employees a business has. What we do have is that we know that only three businesses were denied for attesting that they don't have 15 or more employees. So that means of the 61 applicants, 58 had 15 or more employees. Of the three denied, if we extrapolated their credit based off their 2022 income subject to tax, because we don't have the 2023 data, their total allowed DBI credit would be only $559 total. Income size, on the report, there's a section that shows Portland Aportion net income, so that's, let's see, the third row on the left side there. So we haven't received, like I mentioned, the 2023 DBI returns to date, so the net income is based off the 22 returns. So larger businesses, so that, those that had income of 500,000 or more, Portland net income, they had 17 total applicants, six were approved, so that's a 35% approval rate. For the smaller businesses, so those that had less than $100,000 Portland net income, they had 34 applicants, seven were approved, so that's a 20% approval rate. So like I mentioned earlier, one of the major reasons why some of these were denied was because they weren't in the district, so we do expect that 20% to increase if this ordinance is passed. Outreach, so originally, we did send a direct letter to over 119,000 businesses. We do not plan on doing that disco around. It was not widely popular amongst our business income tax filers. We had a huge complaint on why am I getting this letter when I'm not in the district, I don't rent downtown, or, you know, I don't qualify for any of their criteria. So instead, we will work with the mayor's office on communication plans, like currently we're thinking of sending emails, because we do have a DBI-specific email where people have submitted their questions and comments, so we could reach out directly to them, or we're thinking something social media related. And additionally, we'd plan on either reevaluating previously denied applications or reaching out to customers that were previously denied and have them reapply. And that concludes my presentation. Thank you, and I'll stay for questions, but I know you guys need to have other people come up and testify.
My hands up, so. Commissioner Ryan.
Thanks. So to comply, those businesses that are receiving this relief, is there, let's see, do we have them comply by saying that our employees will return to the office full-time?
Yeah, so there's application, and on that application, people self-assess, attest, so they'll say, I have 15 employees and they work downtown half-time, and they're full-time employees.
So one of the denial would be if they're less than half-time, we don't?
Yeah, so it's, they're telling us, like, we haven't gone in and reviewed anything, so if they say that, nope, we don't have this, we don't meet this criteria, then they're denied for that reason.
You probably figured out, connecting the dots on why we're not giving this to smaller businesses, because I was told, and I believe you, that this would help get more foot traffic, so they would actually go to those small businesses. So I think it's really important that we figure out how to regulate that, that they actually are back in the office.
Perfect.
Celita, does that complete your presentation?
That completes my presentation.
Public testimony?
Yep, we have.
Thanks, Celita.
Thank you.
We have five people signed up. First up is Mia Burke, online.
Welcome, Mia. Can you hear us okay?
Yes.
Great.
Hello.
Hi.
Hi, everyone. Hello, Council, thanks for the opportunity to testify today. I'm the co-owner of a building in the Central Eastside, 711 Southeast Grand Avenue, just on the other side of the Morrison Bridge, backdoor to River City Bicycles. It's called the Nathaniel Hawthorne Building. It's a 10,000-square-foot building. It's on the Historic Register, built in 1892. I'm also the co-founder and former CEO of Alta Planning and Design, a groundbreaking consulting firm specializing in creating active communities. I started Alta's Portland office in the kitchen of my 1,000-square-foot house on Southeast Clinton back in 1999, so we've been in Portland for 25 years. Since then, Alta has grown to 250 staff in 25 cities. As you may have heard, Alta recently relocated downtown. As a huge fan and supporter of Alta, I'm proud and happy for them, and I'm happy for downtown. It's smart business on their part to move where they got a tax credit that was not available to them in the Central Eastside. As the building owner, however, I'm pretty bummed. We bought the building as an investment in the Central Eastside 15 years ago, just before the streetcar went in. We lovingly renovated down to the studs, reusing or recycling 98% of the parts and pieces in compliance with costly historic oversight rules. We've been paying our portion of the streetcar LED, and we bought it in part because of the tax abatement on historic buildings, which just expired, shooting our property taxes up to $24,000 a year, really bad timing. Knowing Alta was moving, we've been trying to rent or sell to no avail, and two of the interested renters told us that they chose downtown, of course, because why would a rational business choose the Central Eastside when they can get a tax credit just across the river or to the north in the Lloyd District? So as it currently stands, the tax credit, which I hear, it's a lovely program, I appreciate the presentation, but it effectively kills the Central Eastside rental market. And not only that, it poaches current renters, it poaches renters like Alta. And this is, I think you all agree, this is unfair and counterproductive. So in conclusion, I own one commercial building. I don't have the wherewithal to withstand years of vacancy. I can't spread the pain over dozens or hundreds of doors like the big boys and girls in the Portland real estate world. So I strongly urge you to extend the credit to Central Eastside. I offer one amendment, which is to offer the tax credit to purchasers of owner-user buildings under the same conditions as the lease that you've outlined, 50 employees, part-time or whatever. And that's it. Thank you for the opportunity to testify today.
Thank you, we appreciate it.
Next up, we have Jared Mase.
Hi, Jared. Welcome.
Hi there, I'm Jared Mase. I run Tender Loving Empire with my wife, Brienne, and we have six stores in Portland. And our original store is downtown in West End, on Tenth and Stark, or Tenth and Harvey Milk, as it were. We have experienced a lot during the 14 years that we've been in the West End, and lots of ups and downs, and I won't bore you with all of those, but ultimately, it just seems like a no-brainer to include the West End in this, in the expansion of this, this program. They've been through a lot over there. There's a lot of, lot of small businesses that I've talked to throughout, you know, throughout the pandemic, and everybody continues to struggle. And I know there's a lot of issues, seeing all the, all the ways the data is chopped up and how it's benefiting people, but ultimately, we need more, more human beings down there, and we need to pay less money out of our pocket to, to taxes. And so this seems like this, this is what, this accomplishes that. So it seems, again, like a no-brainer to extend it to the Central Eastside and to the West End. It will, I think it will really benefit us, and it will really benefit a lot of the people that we do business with, and actually having a ton more people walking around will be really, really helpful as well. So I don't have much more to say than that, but, you know, thumbs up to expanding this program. Thanks a lot, thanks a lot.
Yeah, thank you for being here. Thanks for everything you're doing.
Thank you so much, appreciate it.
It's a great business, thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, we have John Isaacs.
Mr. Isaacs, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. My name's John Isaacs, and I am the Executive Vice President of Public Affairs for the Portland Metro Chamber. I still have not recovered my voice from the timbers match on Saturday night, I mean that. I'm a resident of southeast Portland, and I prefer he/him. The Portland Metro Chamber is Greater Portland's Chamber of Commerce and represents the largest, most diverse network of businesses in the region. Over 80% of our members are small businesses. As you know, the Chamber is the contractual partner of downtown Portland Clean and Safe, the largest enhanced service district in Portland, covering most of the west side of downtown Portland, and I am here today to speak on behalf of both organizations. Today, we express our strong support for the great businesses we just heard from and for expanding the downtown business incentive tax program, which has been a critical and nation-leading step forward in the revitalization of our central city. The original DBITC program, with its targeted eligibility for downtown, Lower Albina, Lloyd and Old Town sub-districts, has demonstrated great potential in stimulating economic activity, attracting and maintaining businesses, enhancing the vibrancy of these areas. By extending the eligibility to include Central Eastside, West End, Pearl, Goose Hollow, South Downtown and South Waterfront, the program will not only broaden its impact, but also ensure a more inclusive and comprehensive revitalization of Portland's central city. As you saw in the Chamber's 2024 State of the Central City Report, we wholeheartedly agree that this expansion will cover our actual entire central city when compared to our peers. The central objective of the program are to, the central objectives of the program are to incentivize long-term commercial leases, thereby encouraging sustainable investment, increasing foot traffic and promoting economic activity across our central districts. Each of these metrics has seen meaningful improvement since the program was approved by city council, including a 14% increase in downtown foot traffic in 2023, with December showing the highest level of central city foot traffic since 2019. The proposed expansion represents a timely and necessary response to the challenges facing our city's core areas. By making the tax credit available to a broader range of businesses across all central city sub-districts, we can accelerate the recovery and growth of our central city. Finally, we would like to thank Commissioner Rubio and the mayor for bringing this amended resolution forward. We recognize this amendment as another step toward realizing the advanced Portland plan produced by Prosper Portland and adopted by this council last year. Thank you for your continued leadership for our entire city.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Eric Haskins. Eric Haskins. Next, Glenn Trager.
Welcome, thank you for being here, thanks for your patience.
Well, good afternoon, Councilmembers and Mayor Wheeler. My name is Glenn Trager. I'm a member of the Pearl District Neighborhood Association Board, and also on the board of Neighbors West Northwest Coalition of 10 Neighborhoods in Northwest Portland. The opinions that I'll be giving you today are strictly my own, that they don't reflect the neighborhood associations. Since the social justice demonstrations beginning in May 2020, when many Pearl businesses sustained significant damages due to vandalism, businesses and commercial activities are struggling in the central city. Urban camping and the ongoing destruction of our neighborhoods by vandalism and graffiti have made it difficult to attract and maintain businesses and the regional customers who once were the lifeblood of our economy. The Pearl right now has 112 vacant storefronts. We just lost REI, which was a major anchor within our neighborhood. We also lost a Rite Aid in our neighborhood that provided a mini grocery store and a source of medicines for our neighbors. Our businesses need a lifeline to stay afloat if we have any chance of economic recovery. The expansion of downtown business instead of tax credit is a necessary step in healing the many ills confronting our city. We certainly support this, this measure for our neighborhood. However, central city neighborhoods are working hard to keep businesses afloat. However, in District Four, with the new budget, their budgets are going to be cut by half. This is just, what happened is the, right now, District Four is basically the area from London all the way to Tiger, and the Neighbors West Northwest Neighborhood Association, which right now maintains 10 neighborhoods, will maintain 32. However, the budget just went up just a little bit, so basically, the amount of money that's available for a budget for neighborhoods will be cut in half. And we all know the importance of having a strong neighborhood association to support our businesses and to support our community. So please don't cut our funding for District Four neighborhoods during this critical time of recovery. Thank you.
Thank you.
That completes testimony.
All right, very good. Any further questions? Celita is still here?
Yeah, I'll have some, a couple of questions for staff.
Thank you. Go ahead, Commissioner.
Well, thank you for the presentation. Can you remind us again how many leases have been approved, thanks to this program? Or first, how long has this program been up and running?
So this program has been up and running, gosh, I can't even remember. I know we started talking about it in May, I want to say October is when we started, yeah.
Excellent, and so we have roughly a six-month window experience with this, and in that six months, how many leases were we able to get renewed?
So we've, that I don't know for sure, but I know we've had 17 approved applications.
What's, is there a difference between renewed?
Yeah, because there could be possibly people that renewed their leases, but maybe didn't qualify for the program because of other criteria not being met.
Okay, that, thank you very much. And actually, I want to, Mia Burke, who testified, that was the property owner, Central Eastside, who was concerned that this program was poaching customers, our potential leasers from Central Eastside and pulling them into downtown. I thought this program was largely for people who renewed their leases, so is there, are there perverse incentives here for creating competition between neighborhoods, or, I may just not understand?
I can take that. Andrew Fitzpatrick, Director of Economic Development in the Mayor's Office. I would say the, the goal of the program is to keep businesses or attract them from outside the central city to the central city. Of course, because we did start with these four sub-districts, you could have that unintended consequence where you're advantaging one sub-district against another, and that's partly why we wanted to rectify that with the kind of consistent treatment across the whole central city today. Obviously, we started in those four, but we're quickly kind of adapting to what we know to be kind of the central city versus other areas outside of Portland primarily, because we know businesses choosing to be in Portland or not are generally considering central city or not Portland.
Thank you. I think during the Chamber's presentation here, John articulated three goals with this program, reducing vacancy rates, increasing foot traffic and promoting economic activity. Do we have any data on changes in vacancy rates, foot traffic or economic activity? I think John casually identified some, but I didn't see any in the, in the packet I got.
Yeah, the official office vacancy rates are about 28.8% in the central business district, they're similarly pretty high in the Central Eastside and other of the sub-districts as well, so they have not gone down. The increase has obviously tapered off some since earlier in the pandemic when it was increasing a lot more rapidly. And then the foot traffic data, yeah, I would, I think Placer.ai data that Portland Clean and Safe uses is pretty authoritative, and that's usually what we point to in terms of foot traffic increases. So happy to, to share that with your office.
Sure, and instead of dragging everyone through a lot of questions, maybe I'll cut to my point. One of the things that I sure hope that we can maybe be more rigorous with, with this program moving forward is trying to dial in the impact it's having, so I'd love to see information on vacancy rates, foot traffic and economic activity in these districts before and after. I'm not really clear on the difference between vacancy rates, foot traffic and economic activity in the downtown core versus the neighborhoods we're likely to move this into. I don't think this would be that difficult to do. I think the vacancy rate data, we should be able to get the foot traffic data. We know that the Chamber gets economic activity data on the more micro neighborhood level, I'm not quite sure, but some of this I think would be helpful. I don't see this to actually be hostile to the program, but rather, I think if we want to learn some things from this and actually think about taking this to scale, and we're already kind of going to scale, without some information that I think would be kind of helpful to have, you know, we have $25 million on the table and the vote we take today million on the table, and the vote we take today is not going to really change our exposure. But, you know, frankly, if we're getting more than $25 million worth of benefits from taking steps like this, it might be worth it. But right now, given the information that I have, I can't really tell if we're losing money on this one or making money on this one. I don't think it's impossible to answer that question. So I hope the next time we see this, we can maybe have a little bit more data that gives us leverage over what we're going here.
Thanks for that request. We'll take baseline data that we have, and we'll try to work to attribute the impacts of the program on each of the sub-districts, especially the new ones that we're moving into, hopefully.
Great. I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Commissioner Ryan?
Yes, thanks. I'm supportive of this. Just thought you should know that. And I'm, I'm happy that we're having this kind of dialogue, because it's innovative, it's creative, and therefore we're building it. And we have to be responsive to keep improving, and hopefully sometimes the questions can help us look at that. So desperate times take desperate measures, and so we're expanding this. That's great. My question is, did we look at Main Streets outside of this area and see if there was also some economic deprivation that would make the case for a Main Street neighborhood and one of our neighborhoods to be considered?
We did look around the central, beyond the central city, but when you look at the vacancy rates, and when you look at the employment base, where the most foot traffic comes or goes based on workers, just so much of that is concentrated in the central city versus neighborhood business districts and other parts of the city. And so we're, kind of wanted to look at focused support within this area first.
I see the lens went from central, central to like expanded central.
We started looking.
Let me just ask directly. So did we look at Main Street neighborhoods, like Lance, St. John's, Canton, those kind of neighborhoods?
We looked everywhere, and we decided that this was a central city tool that we thought we would have the most leverage in terms of a limited public resource for the maximum impact in terms of foot traffic and revitalization.
We didn't see the metrics in the same, they weren't concerning to you as they were with the central?
I think there's a lot of concerns in the other neighborhood business districts as well, and I, I take your point about other types of small business support programs, which is why I think it's great that Prosper is expanding for the winter weather emergency, those types of very small business-focused programs to restaurants and retail shops and other areas that were hit hard in January.
And you would agree, then, if we expanded it to Main Street neighborhoods, businesses, we would consider different parameters, perhaps?
If we expanded this program citywide.
So well, we'd want to go beyond what we are today.
Yeah, I think we would obviously run the risk of hitting the cap that we've set with the limited public resource that we have. And then we'd have to prorate, Salita's obviously the expert here, but per taxpayer that has qualified and been approved, then you'd have to prorate them all down for, for an equity standpoint.
Tell us more about the cap. Like, where, where is it, when, when we hit it?
Yeah, so with the cap, so as I mentioned earlier, so customers, they have a chance to, to do the, to claim the DBI credit, credit over a period of four years. And so what happens if, if we start getting close to the cap, close to those four years, then we'll have to adjust the people that already claim the credit on a prorated basis. So that means like later on, like two, three years down the road, instead of getting your full DBI credit, it would be, be cut based on the, based on what's allowed now.
And then I'm, you know, I made this point earlier, and I'm just going to make it again. I, I don't know what, how we look at the compliance for, is this our compliance must have your employees back 50% of the time in the office? I wish that was higher, so I will say that. That would be one amendment that I would want. And since that's supposed to be the, the reason why it's good for the small businesses is foot traffic, what measures are we taking now to comply with that? What's our, how do we regulate that?
Yeah, so for the.
Self-reported?
Yeah, so for the application part, it's self-reported, but we do have auditors. And so later on down the road, we will have auditors looking into that, whether they're meeting that in-office criteria, how we're going to go about that. We're not necessarily sure yet, but it is something that our auditors will look into.
I, I think a lot of us are concerned about that, because we're, are larger private businesses that, that can do their work, if you will, at the privilege of being in their homes and their second homes, whatever, are the ones that we would like to also be a part of that foot traffic. So I want to make sure that we have some criteria and some process that we're feeling good about.
Yeah, and I was going to say, we also have penalties that will be imposed. So, yeah, so there's regular penalties for, like, let's say, lease stopped somehow. They do have, the company does have to pay back that credit, and then they pay it back with interest. If it's something that happens just in the normal course, like their, 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 the person that they lease with determines that they don't want to rent to them anymore, then they don't get penalized as with penalties. But if it's something more fraudulent, where they lied and said that they never had, or they lied and said they had, you know, 15 employees working full-time and they didn't, that, that's going to be more punitive?
As it should be. Thank you. I think it's so important, as we're showing up to be good partners with our businesses in this regard, that we really do focus on as much shared accountability and shared responsibility and shared sacrifice. So we're in this together, and I just want to keep hearing that they're complying. Okay.
Great. And could you just clarify that owner-occupied is also eligible for this?
Owner-occupied is, yeah, you're correct. Owner-occupied is also another criteria.
Okay, good. During public testimony, it wasn't, I think some people weren't clear on that one, so I just want to get that on the record.
Yeah, I think Mia Burke had brought that up as well, and I think, not to speak for her, but I think she was expressing support for the expansion where her building is in the Central East Side.
Good. Excellent. Anything else? All right, this is an emergency ordinance. Kealan, please call the roll.
Rubio.
I want to again thank Mayor Wheeler and Andrew and Salita and the finance team for their dedication and for thinking very innovatively about ways that we can support businesses, big and small, who are working with us to stay and help our city thrive. And specifically speaking to those businesses who continue to work with us on their desire to stay here in the city, we just want to say we see you and we thank you directly, because you've all been holding on strong during this time of need for our city. I also want to lift up that we're not just working on these key financial ideas, but also on bringing back foot traffic with so many other innovative event activations, such as the Winter Skating Rink and Winter Lights Festival, and so many other things that are in the works that are driving Portlanders and even those that are still skeptical to come to a more active downtown. And in addition to these activations, I want to thank Downtown Clean and Safe, the First Responder Bureau, and all of those who are working on community safety to ensure that we have a safe and clean downtown, so that when people come to shop and recreate and work in our city's core, they feel happy to be here. So thank you again for all of your work and happy to vote aye.
Ryan.
Yes, I thank you, Commissioner Rubio and Mayor, for bringing this back. And when I was here in the spring, it felt like a wonderful baby step, and I'm glad that we're expanding it, and I'm also glad that we're looking into how we can make sure that there's compliance and that we really reach that impact. But the metrics were wonderful. It was great when you expanded, so I could see it. And I look forward to more dialogue around this. I think we're on to something, and I vote aye.
Gonzalez.
Would like to thank the mayor and Commissioner Rubio for bringing this forward. As we continue our economic recovery as a city, it is crucial to incentivize and create a supportive environment for employers. While many suburban businesses and business clusters have weathered the storm through the pandemic, it is businesses located in the urban core that have been disproportionately impacted by higher insurance costs and the absence of foot traffic and challenges in bringing their employees back to the office. Expanding the footprint of current incentives is an important step in revitalizing urban core while also supporting entrepreneurs and employers and owners who have been hardest hit in recent years and who now need our support and frankly, our incentives. I believe it is important, however, to emphasize the total tax burden on our employers and earners, and it is essential that as the city sacrifices important sources of revenue, which we are, have done and are continuing to do, to support our businesses, our partners at the county and metro also do their part and evaluate what disincentives they're creating for earners and employers to stay in the city, in the urban core, in the region. With that, I vote aye.
Max.
Yeah, I want to thank the mayor and Commissioner Rubio for bringing this forward. I very much appreciate the staff presentation and the public testimony that we heard here, too. This is the kind of pilot project that I think is really exciting. I'm eager to learn about the real-world impacts of, frankly, providing tax cuts to businesses here in Portland. You know, I think that we can, there's more that we could learn from this particular experiment, and I've articulated that, having a sense of the impact these cuts have on vacancy rates, foot traffic, and economic activity, both before and after we implement this program. And maybe, I think there's a real opportunity now in that we have this program in place in the downtown area and whatnot, but as we think about moving into these new areas, kind of, I think there are lots of control experiments in nature in this particular instance, which we could learn from. Frankly, I hope that data will educate us and give us, give this council and future councils some information about when and where we can effectively cut taxes and meaningfully benefit businesses, which is a path I'm excited to be on, which is why I vote aye. Thank you.
Wheeler.
Well, we saved a meaty one for the very end of the day. And Salita, I want to thank you for your presentation. Andrew, I want to thank you for your continued hard work on this. Commissioner Rubio, you and your team have been great partners on this, and I've appreciated it and enjoyed it. This is a waypoint. This isn't an endpoint. It's a waypoint, but it's a really important one. And as was noted earlier, this is part of a larger economic recovery plan that includes addressing public safety, addressing homelessness, addressing livability, addressing activations in the city. And now this is the tax and finance incentive piece of the package, or at least one, one tax incentive piece of the package. And we're going to continue on all of these fronts. I'm pleased to say that we're making good headway. We're starting to see the results, and it's energizing. And I appreciate the fact that this council continues to work together in a very unified way in moving forward on all of these initiatives and all of these different areas. It's notable. I vote aye, and the ordinance is adopted, and we are adjourned. Thank you.